All right, the meeting is called to order. Can we get the roll, please?
Danielle Bailey.
I am here.
Tyler Robinson.
Here.
Greg Strick.
Here.
Andre Spinelli.
Here.
Seth Anderson.
Here.
Brian Looney.
Here.
Jared Gardner.
Here.
Erin O'Quinn.
Here.
Radhika Krishna.
Here.
Thank you.
And I would just like to welcome our newest Planning and Zoning Commissioner. So be kind to her, you guys, it's her first meeting. Moving on, is there a motion to approve the minutes? Moved by Commissioner Strick, second by Commissioner O'Quinn. Any objections? Seeing no objections, the minutes are approved. Moving on to disclosures. Commissioner Gardner.
None.
Commissioner O'Quinn.
None.
Commissioner Robinson.
None.
Commissioner Strick.
None.
I would like to disclose that I was absent from the items on the consent agenda, so I'll be abstaining from those. And Commissioner Looney?
None.
Commissioner Spinelli?
Nothing.
And you're gonna have to help me pronounce your last name, so I get it right every time.
Krishna.
Krishna? Commissioner Krishna?
I wasn't seated yet, so I'll be abstaining from the consent agenda.
And then Commissioner Anderson.
None.
All right, thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve? Moved by Commissioner Gardner, second by Commissioner Anderson. Call for a vote? And the consent agenda is approved. And just as a clarifying question, I believe, staff asked if we wanted to consolidate these two items, so we have to do a motion to consolidate. Would a Commissioner member like to move to consolidate the two items on our agenda today? Moved by Commissioner Strick, second by Commissioner Looney. Any objections? All right, we will hear those two items together, however, we will be coming up with findings and voting on them at the end separately. I guess that is perfect timing for setting up our public... Sorry, I'm getting over a cold, so I'm a little foggy. For setting up our public hearing protocol. The procedure by which the public may speak at the commission at its meetings is as follows: After the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the Chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the Commission Rules of Procedure. Petitioners, including all of his or her representatives, will receive, in this case, 20 minutes because we're combining the two. Part of this time may be reserved by rebuttal. Representatives of groups such as community councils and PTAs will receive 10 minutes because it is doubled, and individuals will receive 6 minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to the action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except for the commission's recommendations to the Assembly, which are not appealable. Appeals must be filed with the Clerk's Office within 20 days after approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission of the resolution, which is the commission's final decision. A fee for appeal is required at the time of filing. Also, just because I know there's a lot of people that are gonna be testifying on this today, I would listen to the staff comments, and they're gonna talk about the approval criteria. All the planning commissioners, we're gonna have to make our decisions based on the approval criteria, so really start thinking about what those criteria are and how your arguments fit in with them, because that's gonna help us make our decisions today. Staff, can we hear the report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So with regards to Case 2019-0119, I'll speak to that first, that's the comp plan amendment. This is a request to change the land use classification in the Anchorage 2040 Land Use Plan map for five acres from the open space designation to the compact mixed residential low. This map amendment will bring the map up-to-date to reflect the new buildable land for housing that is being created for this unique site. Now, in regards to the approval criteria, approval criteria A, does this reflect a change in projections or assumptions? The department finds the standard is met. Anchorage 2040 Land Use Plan map classifies this five acres as open space because it was a fill site for unclassified fill, which is not suitable for habitable structures. Now, the property owner intends to place compacted structural fill at the site so that housing can be built there. This is an opportunity to provide new housing capacity for the community and to try and make up for the substantial housing shortage that is identified in Anchorage 2040. The comprehensive plan amendment is a logical action for this subject property, given the change in the soil suitability for structures. The designation change to compact mixed residential low is consistent with the surrounding area. The addition of new acreage with the residential designation will provide a net increase in housing units, which will reduce the projected deficit. Approval criteria B, the proposed amendment maintains the internal consistency of the comprehensive plan, the standard is met. This map amendment is consistent with Anchorage 2040, which forecasts a housing shortage of 7,900 dwelling units. Anchorage 2040 Strategy 12 says that the plan is a living document. It should be updated based on performance indicators and new information as the city evolves in response to new circumstances. Approval criteria C, the standard is met. Seventy acres of land surrounding the site will remain classified as open space. This map amendment will convert only five acres of land identified as open space to compact mixed residential low, which is the same designation as the five acres that is next to it. Furthermore, this site has direct vehicular access onto both Sand Lake Road and West Diamond Boulevard, both arterial streets in the official Streets and Highways Plan. This amendment will not be detrimental to public interest, health, safety, convenience, or welfare of the community. Approval criteria D, the standard is met, the map amendment is supported by Anchorage 2040 Goals Four and Eight. Approval criteria E, consistency with the locational criteria, the standard is met. The map amendment is consistent with this description for a locational criteria for compact mixed residential low. I'll quote from the plan. "Compact mixed residential low, this designation provides for a compatible and diverse range of single-family, attached, and small-scale apartment housing choices in the same neighborhood." Locational criteria is areas with a mix of single-family and low-intensity multifamily housing. The compact mixed residential low land use classification is congruent with the surrounding development in the area. There is no residential development possible north or east of the site because of the fill operation. The existing housing types located south of West Diamond Boulevard are single-family and multifamily. The housing types located across Sand Lake Road are single-family and duplex. This is an ideal location to increase residential density because it is surrounded by open space and has good access to major streets, public utilities. Site is well-suited for development, unlikely to create a negative impact on neighboring properties. It'll also match the land use designation that is on the five acres that is right next to it. So the department's recommending approval of this comprehensive plan amendment for five acres from open space to compact mixed residential low. Behind the staff report is a draft Assembly ordinance. Tonight, the commission should take action, make a motion on this case before the next case, the rezon case. So I'll make a presentation on that now as well, since the public hearing's been combined. Thank you. So with Case 2019-0118, this is an application by Anchorage Sand and Gravel requesting to rezone two parcels of land totaling 10 acres from R1A, single-family residential large lot, to B1A, local and neighborhood business district, and R2M, mixed residential district. Oh yeah, so pages 14 and 15 of your packet have the usual zoning map and aerial photo, and that sort of shows you what's at issue here. The tract three at the intersection is slated for a B1A, neighborhood-serving commercial district, two acres, and the eight acres around it is the R2M, mixed residential district. So it tracks three and two, or two and three, page 14 and 15. In regards to the approval criteria for rezoning, approval criteria number one, the standard is met. The rezoning shall be in the best interest of the citizens of Anchorage and promote the public health, safety, and general welfare. This rezoning to B1A and R2M promotes general welfare and benefits the community as a whole by providing more housing opportunities in a small commercial area at the northeast corner of West Diamond Boulevard and Sand Lake Road. The B1A district is proposed for the tract three and would only be two acres in size. The B1A district is a neighborhood-serving, small-scale, commercial district that limits the allowed uses to be compatible in scale and character with adjacent residential uses. Think corner store for this zoning district. Now, the R2M-style housing fits into scale with single-family, two-family areas. In this case, the surrounding neighborhoods are single-family, two-family, and multifamily. Buyers of these new units would likely be workforce participants and families, empty nesters, not unlike the prevailing household types in the area, and would support local businesses and services in the B1A neighborhood-scale commercial corner. Approval criteria number two, the standard is met. The 2012 West Anchorage District Plan identifies the site as low-median intensity residential, that's eight to 15 dwelling units per acre. It has the asterisk standing for small-scale commercial, and then there's the other areas that function as park and natural resource, that's the green sort of surrounding it. Anchorage 2040 Land Use Plan map shows the site as compact mixed residential low, and it refers you to the West Anchorage District Plan to get the small-scale commercial designation. There's also the other open space. Both the West Anchorage District Plan and Anchorage 2040 are elements of the comprehensive plan, and these land use designations have the same meaning. The implementing zoning districts for the residential and commercial land use designations in these plans is B1A and R2M districts. The plan calls for tract two and three to be rezoned from R1A to R2M and B1A. So I was sort of questioned about that, and I want to make it clear, so if you go to page 36 of the 2040 Plan, it reads, and I'll just quote from it, "Neighborhood designation areas can include small-scale commercial services located in existing neighborhood, business, zoning districts, or in new locations designated by a neighborhood or district plan. For example, the West Anchorage District Plan's land use plan map shows a maroon asterisk over several of its residentially-zoned areas to provide for small-scale commercial uses." These asterisk designations still apply in the 2040 Land Use Plan. The B1A district is the implementing district. So with this wording that I just read from the 2040 Plan, it's saying that you're not gonna find any asterisks in the land use plan map in Anchorage 2040, but what you have to do is you have to go to the West Anchorage District Plan to see those asterisks. That's probably the case for that Emerald Hills rezon a few months ago, that it was also the same thing, where there wasn't an asterisk on 2040, but it's on the West Anchorage District Plan. You have to look at both plans. Why they didn't do that, I never question why that wasn't the case, but the wording is there to say you should follow the West Anchorage District Plan's designation, which has been there since 2012. Approval criteria two for rezoning, the standard is met... Oh, I see, I talked to that. I spoke to that. Anchorage 2020 Policies Four, Five, Seven, and 14 speak to this proposed rezon. Policy Four, the zoning map shall ultimately be amended to be consistent with adopted neighborhood and district plans. That's what this is doing. Rezoning B1A and R2M would implement the 2012 West Anchorage District Plan, which designates the area as low-median intensity residential, eight to 15 dwellings per acre, and small-scale commercial. Policy Five, rezones and variances shall be compatible in scale with adjacent neighborhoods and consistent with the goals and policies of Anchorage 2020. The proposed B1A and R2M zoning is compatible with the adjacent zoning and uses. The property across Sand Lake Road is zoned R1A and developed with duplexes. The properties across West Diamond Boulevard are zoned R1 and developed with multifamily and single-family housing. There's R2M-style development located south of West Diamond Boulevard, adjacent to this site. Policy Four, avoid incompatible uses adjoining one another. The site of this rezoning is surrounded to the north and east by large expanses of unclassified fill and cannot support buildings. The south and west sides of the rezoning are bordered by West Diamond Boulevard and Sand Lake Road, which are classified as major arterial, minor arterial, respectively. Policy 14, conservation of residential lands for housing is a high community priority. New residential development at densities less than identified in neighborhood and district plans is discouraged. No regulatory action under Title 21 shall result in the conversion of dwelling units or residentially-zoned property into commercial or industrial uses unless consistent with an adopted plan. So both the West Anchorage District Plan and Anchorage 2040 designate this as small-scale commercial. The implementing zoning district is the B1A district, so there's no conflict with this policy 14 and the proposed rezon. Anchorage 2040 land use policies that support this rezoning are Policy 1.1, "Use of Anchorage 2040 Land Use Plan in concert with area-specific plans is a framework to guide decisions for future development patterns, land uses, and allocations of growth." The proposed rezon implements the West Anchorage District Plan and Anchorage 2040. Policy 1.2 employs land use and development strategies for Anchorage Bowl to accommodate the forecast number of additional resident households and jobs through 2040. Even if all the residential land use designations in Anchorage 2040 are developed with housing, there would still be a projected deficit of 7,900 housing units. If this rezon is not approved, then the gap between supply and demand would worsen. Policy 4.1 provides sufficient land to meet the diverse housing needs of Anchorage citizens. The result of this rezoning would be to increase the residential density of the site and to provide small amount of neighborhood-serving commercial. The rezoning to R2M would expand housing opportunities in the area. The rezoning to B1A does not expand the commercial corridor, since this district has a maximum allowed size of two acres, and there's no commercial on this section of West Diamond Boulevard. Policy 4.3, promote balanced neighborhoods with diverse infill housing and provide opportunities for development of affordable and accessible housing that avoids creating areas of concentrated low-income housing. This rezoning promotes balanced neighborhoods by increasing housing opportunities and allowing a greater variety of housing types. The current R1A zoning has limited to single-family detached houses. In addition to single-family detached houses, the R2M also allows duplexes, townhouses, and multifamily dwellings, like the housing development across the street south of West Diamond Boulevard. Approval criteria three, the standard is met. This rezoning is consistent with the purpose of the proposed zoning districts, the B1A and R2M. The B1A district is intended for small, compact, commercial sites or areas within or surrounded by residential areas. The district is applied to encourage the provision of small-scale retail, office, service uses compatible in scale and character with adjacent residential uses, providing services to the surrounding neighborhood. That's a quote from the purpose statement for the B1A. Now for the R2M. The R2M district is intended primarily for residential areas that allow for a variety of single-family, two-family, multifamily dwellings with gross densities between five and 15 dwelling units per acre. The R2M district provides residential neighborhoods with a greater diversity of housing by allowing a mix of both detached and a variety of attached dwelling units in close proximity to each other, rather than separated into different zoning districts. Approval criteria four speaks to compatibility. The standard is met. The proposed rezoning is compatible with surrounding zoning and development. The north and east sides of the site are zoned R1A but are not developable with structures because of the fill operation of unclassified fill. The south and west sides of the site are bordered by two arterial roads. Across the street is single-family, duplex, and multifamily subdivisions that are zoned R1A and R1. Approval criteria five is about facilities and services. The standard is met. There are separated multi-use pathways for pedestrians and bikes on West Diamond Boulevard and Sand Lake Road. The site borders arterial streets, natural gas, electricity, public, water, sewer, those are all available to the property, and it's within the building safety area, building service area, police and fire, and park service areas. Approval criteria six, the standard is met. The rezoning will not result in adverse impacts on the natural environment. Approval criteria seven, the standard is met. The proposed rezoning will not result in a significant impact on adjacent land uses. The site of butts West Diamond Boulevard, Sand Lake Road, which are both arterial streets. The north and east sides of the site are a fill operation which is designated as open space in the comprehensive plan. The B1A district has a strict requirement to not exceed two acres in size. The R2M is proposed for the remaining eight acres, and this could not be expanded either because of the fill site that surrounds the property that wouldn't allow habitable structures on unclassified fill. Approval criteria eight, the standard is met. The rezoning to B1A and R2M will not extend a land use pattern that is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. The Anchorage 2040 Land Use Plan map deliberately increased residential density at this site, given the well-documented need for housing in the community. Specifically identified... This site is specifically identified in Anchorage 2040's Growth and Change Map. So on page 27 of Anchorage 2040 Plan, it calls out the site as "Land use designation change from uses currently allowed by existing zoning as of 2017." So it was an area that was highlighted as an area that was... The Anchorage 2040 Plan was calling for an increase in residential density. That's that small-scale commercial in the compact mixed residential low land use designation. Approval criteria nine, the last one, the standard is met. This does not create a split zoning. The department finds that all nine approval criteria met and recommends approval of this rezoning, subject to an effective clause requiring the conditional use for the fill operation to be updated. Attaches in a draft Assembly ordinance. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Those are the comments I have on these two cases. Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions for staff? All right, I'm gonna hit the ground running with a couple questions. Going to the first item on our agenda, you showed us this map.
Yeah.
And if I'm to understand it, the reason that you're asking for... Or that the petitioner is asking for the change to the comp plan is because there is a different designation put halfway through the tract.
Right.
And so on this side of the tract, it's currently designated as compact mixed residential, but on this side of the tract, it's designated as open space, and it was done that way because previous infill requirements thought that it was undevelopable?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
If the people who wrote the Anchorage 2040 Plan, if they'd known that there would be suitable, compacted, you know, ground that could be built on in that location, then the designation in the plan would have been for this compact mixed residential low.
Because we won't designate something as buildable or as a residential or anything but open space or PLI if you can't develop on it.
That's exactly right.
Okay.
It would assume that it wouldn't be developable, only the five acres of good high ground at the corner.
So that's the main reason for item number one?
That's the split, yeah.
So moving on to item number two, there are two things that are being requested. It's a rezon to R2M and a rezon to B1A.
Yeah.
All right, so if I'm gonna read our 2040 Land Use Plan zoning district cross-reference, where it labels what is allowed in compact mixed residential low, it labels R2M and R2D. However, it does not there list B1A. But then when I went down to what is allowed in any of the small-scale neighborhoods, which includes compact mixed residential, it says it allows B1A in existing locations, which this would not apply because it does not currently have B1A on it.
Right.
Or it allows it in new locations that are designated by the neighborhood or district plan. Is that correct?
That's right.
So then I went and I looked at the West Anchorage District Plan, and on page 75 of the West Anchorage District Plan, I saw a star there that says "small-scale commercial." So would that qualify under a place where B1A is allowed in compact mixed residential low because it is designated by the neighborhood district plan?
Yes, the limiting zoning district for compact or small-scale commercial is the B1A district.
My recommendation is that if this heads up to the Assembly, that that information is made a lot more clear and that maps are provided, because that was really hard to seek out. Are there other questions for staff? Commissioner Robinson?
Thank you, through the chair. How common is it to have this sort of open space designation on privately-held land?
I don't think it's very common.
I mean, my understanding is that that land use classification in our long-range effort was primarily because it was deemed to be unbuiltable, and so it's sort of just... Is that right?
Yeah.
Or is this a policy sort of directive that this is an opportunity to create more active recreational uses or anything along that? I mean, is it long-term the designation is just that it could just stay after it's reclaimed from its fill operation, just kind of an open lot?
Yeah, you have that correct, Mr. Robinson. There's... In Anchorage 2040's Land Use Plan map, there's two open space designations, park and natural resource area and other open space. It's because they're just kind of like different types of parks and different types of open spaces, and they wanted to have two different categories to try and explain that, rather than fit them all under one color of green. And this is the one that's under other open spaces, because it's not publicly owned.
So if I understand it correctly, the policy justification to change it from open space to residential is the conclusion that the land is no longer unbuiltable?
Yes.
So what's to say in the future that the additional land would become buildable, and therefore it could all be developed as residential?
Well, a decision like that would come before the Planning and Zoning Commission would follow the process we're in. If they sought to undo the last 50 years of filling this to make it buildable and compact it, you know, in all the ways that's required, that expensive process, then they'd have to come back before this board. I don't think that that's in the cards.
Well, right, but we didn't expect this to happen either. I mean, I guess my point is that at some point, there's always a change in the economics, right? And I'm just trying to reconcile what this long-term, this open space designation really does. I mean, maybe the whole thing, if at any point that it becomes buildable, it would be, you know, receive an application from the planning department to become residential, maybe the whole thing should be classified as residential. It's just challenging to develop residential. At least, that's how I see it in my head. But that answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yeah, a question about the conditional use permit. There is one section of the conditional use permit that says that the site can be used for fill and then graded and leveled for use of an outdoor recreation area. And I wasn't around for any of the original conversations or discussions on why it said outdoor recreation area, and if that was intended to be the entire area, or if at that point there was opposition to other types of development, or kind of what the reasoning was behind it.
Yeah, when there's a hole in the ground and there's a fill operation that is just kind of like junky peat and stuff that can't be built on, then it's common for the application for the conditional use approval for it to be a fill site is to call it golf courses or open space or, you know, future soccer fields. That's pretty common. There was an acknowledgement that they weren't gonna be able to build structures, that the land wouldn't be able to support structures, and so that this would be... You know, the only future use of it would be some sort of passive or active, you know, recreation or open space. It just wouldn't be developable. Now, there are other parks in the area. There's the Coastal Wildlife Refuge, there's the Jade Park, there's Kincaid, there's other parks in the area. But, you know, this was just... It's a weird case where you have privately-held land that, you know, is not gonna be developable with structures.
So if I understand right, if both of the requests are approved tonight, it's more or less saying that the request is in alignment with the comprehensive plan and the neighborhood plans, and everyone agrees to that? In addition to that, the conditional use permit would need to be updated to reflect this section and remove the recreational use for this area that's being added?
Well, the planning department is recommending a condition of approval on this rezoning, that they have to return before the Planning and Zoning Commission to amend their conditional use for a fill site, because there's a different development. use for a, for a fill site, because there's a different development plan now. It's, right now, they're, you know, side dumping peat from road projects and that. But they're going to be doing a different grading plan and a different type of compacted fill for five acres to add to the existing five acres that, near the corner. And that required, that requires an update to this existing conditional use permit. I don't know that I would look at it as, you know, stealing five acres of, of open space from the community, if, if you, if you're seeking to frame it that way.
Commissioner Robinson?
Thank you. If, if, if the petitioner, and I understand their application is without, you know, any sort of development proposal, which is clearly within their right to bring it forward at this, like this. But if they were to develop, let's just say that the track two were developed as R2M and they were to develop it without subdividing, so as a condominium project, multiple structures on a lot. What's the number, what's the number of units that would be required, that would kick in a major site plan approval with public hearing?
A major site plan review requires three or more structures and three or more dwelling units. You have to have both. And the R2M district limits the number of dwelling units in one building to eight.
Right. If I'm not mistaken, though, there's a trigger for, for both administrative site plan and then a major site plan. And I'm trying to remember where the line is for major site plan review.
Yeah, I was quoting from memory. Let me just read to you. Yeah, three to 30, right. So, you're subject to administrative site plan review by the planning department if you have three or more structures, three or more individual buildings, and between three and 30 total dwelling units. For 31 or more dwelling units and three or more buildings, then you have a major site plan review. And you usually go before the urban design commission. It takes, I don't know, like 150 dwelling units, or quite a few dwelling units for it to come before the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So, so if it's 31 or more, and remind me what the density range is in the comprehensive plan for this, this mixed, medium intensity?
Five to 15.
Five. So if I'm just doing the math, right, if the low end is five times eight acres, that's 40 units, right? So it, by right, unless they're underbuilding, which we don't want them to do, right? If that, if that's where we go, they would, they would come, a major site plan would kick in? If they were at, if they were at 40 units at their minimum density, a major site plan would kick in?
Yeah, almost certainly, yeah.
Great. Thank you.
I don't see any other questions, so I am going to ask one more. Staff, could you highlight, I believe it's page 27 of the Land Use Plan, Areas of Growth and Change? Would you let us know what this location is designated as in the Land Use Plan?
Sure. On page 27 of the Anchorage 2040 Land Use Plan map, it, if you look at this site, it shows a tan color with a stipple. And that's areas of moderate growth, and the stipple stands for Land Use Designation Change From Use Is Currently Allowed By Existing Zoning. So that to me means that it's calling for the zoning to change.
All right. And just for clarification, this is an area that the Land Use Plan is saying is going to have moderate growth, or we are projecting it to have moderate growth in the future?
Yeah.
And it will need to have a zoning change in order to accommodate that? That is what was designated in the 2040 Land Use Plan?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for staff? All right, can we hear from the petitioner?
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the Commission, MOA, Planning Department, professionals, and members of the public. My name is Tom Dray with the S4 Group. Tonight, I'm representing the petitioner, Alaska Sand and Gravel. With me here are Brandon Markot and Dave Grineer of Triad Engineering, and Mr. Ryan Mormon, Ryan Zenz, and Chris Taylor of ASNG. First off, I'd just like to hand up, hand to the Commission just some copies of the 2040 Plan and the Land Use Plan, just for clarification on what we're talking about tonight.
Thank you. I have a copy on my phone, but I think it'll be helpful to have something bigger. If there are extra, I'll have the extra one be sent out to the crowd, too.
I've handed out copies of the pertinent pages of the Anchorage 2040 Land Use Plan, 2040 Plan, and the West Anchorage District Plan. These copies are in the Planning and Zoning Commission packet, are referenced in various locations of the analysis by the MOA and by our written analysis. And we have detailed responses for, that correlate to each condition on page 13 to 18, and pages 20 through, 2 through 29 of your packet. Okay, let's go through briefly the submitted copies of the plan, starting with the 2040 Land Use Plan. I've highlighted the area of Pollen Park. This area is designated in the color orange as compact mixed residential low. The next page, page 38 of the 2040, defines this as primarily suited for R2M zoning with a density level of five to 15 dwelling units per acre. It sets some caveats, such as keeping a similar front and rear yard setback and building height of single family neighborhoods. In R1A zoning, for instance, the setbacks for building homes is 20-foot front yard, five-foot side yard, and 10-foot rear yard setbacks. And R2M building setback is the same with 25 and 10-foot rear. The building height limit in R2M is 30 feet, and the building height limit is also 30 feet in R1A zoning district. The 2040 Plan also talks about the goal of a neighborhood-wide mix of housing types, unit sizes, and household incomes. That's on page 38 of the plan. As can be seen on the Land Use Plan map, there is very, very little of the type of residents that would be built under the R2M zoning. Most of the development in the area from Kincaid to Jade Park, west and east, and from Diamond Boulevard to Kincaid, between north and south, is single family homes of varying values. West Park has over 1,000 homes, and the selling prices are somewhere in the $450,000 range and above. Sky Hill Homes are in the $900,000 and above range, and Mirwood to the north there are somewhere in the $500,000 and above range. Pollen Park will provide a unique opportunity for first-time home buyers, grandparents downsizing, or wanting to move closer to their grandkids, and for others, just wanting a smaller house to maintain, and be near parks, bicycle trails, a huge open space area, and within walking distance to a possible bakery or coffee shop. Now, let's look at the West Anchorage District Plan, the next page in the copies I submitted to you tonight. Pollen Park is designated in a light orange color that signifies a land use classification of low, medium intensity. Low, medium intensity is defined by the West Anchorage District Plan, shown in the next page submitted to you tonight, as having a not, a density of not less than eight DUAs and up to 15 dwelling units per gross acre. Allowed houses include townhomes and low-density multifamily. Again, with an assortment of caveats that is outlined in WADP definition, such as areas that have developed with a mix of single-family homes and multifamily. Now, let's take a look at the 2040 Land Use Plan and how it relates to the commercial zone. Going to page 36 of the 2040 Plan, the next page I submitted to you tonight, let's look at the commercial application of the 2040 Land Use Plan in this area. I've highlighted the pertinent paragraph in yellow, and the plan clearly states, "Neighborhood designated areas can include small commercial services located in existing neighborhood business zoning districts, or in new locations designated by neighborhood or district plan." For example, the WADP Land Use Plan map shows a maroon asterisk over several of its residentially designated areas to provide for small commercial uses. It says these asterisk designations still apply to the 2040 Land Use Plan, and the B1A district is the implementing district in this area. On the WADP detail map, the maroon asterisk is shown in location of Pollen Park Track Three. In the WADP, small commercial is defined on page 81 in the handout. Briefly, it states that the designation provides for very limited neighborhood convenience services in close proximity to surrounding neighborhoods, such as coffee shops, bakeries, and convenience-scale grocery oriented to the needs of the surrounding population. For comparison purposes, purposes, excuse me, to other commercial in a generally residential zone, the Rustic Goat on Northern Ice Boulevard is about one acre in size, including all the parking that they added across the street there. Fire Island Bakery in the south addition of downtown Anchorage is about 0.2 acres, with current title 21 parking. Regulations, a bakery would most likely take up about an acre or so of land. So the combination of those businesses, as an example, would be about the maximum that could be developed on Pollen Park Track Three and the proposed B1A. Now, adding the three to five acres of additional R2M to the comp plan, the map on page nine of the packet clearly shows, as we discussed earlier, that the requested area proposed to be amended to the 2040 LUP. Additional area for the R2M is five acres. Staff has outlined very well on page two through five of the Planning and Zoning Commission packet, the justification for the comp plan amendment. Briefly, they state, "This is a unique opportunity to provide new housing capacity for the community, and to try and make up for the substantial housing shortages that was identified in the 2040 Plan. It should be distinctly noted that this comp plan amendment is only required for the additional residential R2M property. The two acres that is proposed to be rezoned to B1A is already a part of the Anchorage 2040 Land Use Plan and a part of the West Anchorage District Plan as stated above." Blending into the neighborhood. In code, in many places, it states that new development should blend in with the surrounding developed neighborhoods. It should be noted that Pollen Park is 2,600 feet from the northern area, zoned R2A to the northeast property. It's over 500 feet from the easterly area of Jade Park Baseball Field, zoned PLI. It's over 600 feet from the western area, developed in West Park called Sonoma Glen, zoned R1A, but has been developed at a density of about 10 DUA, DUA with duplexes, and lies completely out of view. And 300 feet or so to the south lies Sea Cliff, a beautiful and well-maintained development, zoned R1, but developed with fourplexes at a density of about 10 DUA. Pollen Park sits in a notch of land between two arterials to the south and west, and an open area to the east and the north. We truly believe this area will be a huge asset and well-loved by the community when it gets built. A coffee shop, a bakery, it will allow community members to be able to ride their bike, or, or walk with their kids to get a bite to eat, a cup of coffee, et cetera, without having to drive their car. These kind of small commercial areas with townhouse residential close by can help create a real sense of community, a gathering place for conversation and identity." Thank you. And again, the specific responses are page 13 to 18, and pages 22 to 29.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner? I don't have a question for the petitioner, but more so a question for staff. I, my attention was drawn to, it's from the West Anchorage District Plan, where it describes small-scale commercial. It was on page 81 of the West Anchorage District Plan, where it describes small-scale commercial. Intent description, the last bullet, says, "Locations are not fixed but are indicated by a floating symbol at a focal intersection most central to the surrounding neighborhoods. A small-scale center may be proposed within a quarter mile of the symbol shown, where there are more than one focal intersection, where more than one focal intersection is possible, an alternative symbol is shown to expand the quarter-mile radius." That wasn't shown, correct? Is there an alternative on the West Anchorage? Okay. And then, it says, "Only a single small-scale commercial facility is allowed at each location or pair of locations." So, there couldn't, if we're looking at, one of the conditions is, is this going to exacerbate conditions, and is it going to bring in commercial? Since this is labeled as a small-scale commercial, according to the West Anchorage District Plan, only one facility is allowed at each location or pair of locations. Is that correct? So we, it won't be expanding? And maybe I'm not being clear?
I think, I think that statement is correct. You know, the B1A district can't expand beyond two acres.
Okay.
That's its maximum size that's allowed. It's in the definition of the district. There's no variance or deviation from that. It can never be expanded, the B1A that's being proposed tonight for two acres.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Robinson?
Thank you. Tom, would you consider what you're proposing here a mixed-use development?
That would have been ideal, but I had to keep them separated in this area because it didn't really fit in with the 2040 Plan.
But I guess, I guess, I mean, it doesn't have to be in one building.
Oh, true.
But I mean, like what you're, you referenced the Rustic Goat, for example, which is not in the same building. So, I mean, do you think of this as a cohesive development?
Correct, yes.
So, as, if this were to get approved, and as you would move forward, what would be your, what would require you to, I mean, the examples that you gave were in existing, existing platted areas, they were in urban areas, and what you've described is just, you know, you just have these tracks. So what's to say that we wouldn't just have a segregated commercial space that's primarily serving cars going by, and, and with no connection to a neighborhood behind it? What would be the intent to connect them?
Well, the, the commercial can only be on the, on that, on Track Three, the B1A zone, and the residential would surround it.
Do you think?
So, we can't have, you know, them two connected.
And you're, if you were to move forward with the residential, would you plat that, or do you think it would be done without plating action?
There, there's the two different ways. It'd end up going to one of the Commissions regardless because of the size.
Okay, thank you.
I have another question. Can't commercial residence, commercial areas have residences, like on the second floor?
They could, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Like Rustic Goat has condos right beside it there, on the same track.
I just wanted to make sure I wasn't misinterpreting the separation.
Okay.
I don't know, is, is mixed use allowed in B1A?
Yes.
It is? Thanks.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes, I, I guess read some of the documentation on the conditional use permit, where there was some residents concerned that the, that potentially the, I guess, in this case, Track Three, right at the corner, could end up with a gas, a gas station. Is a gas station, would that be allowed in B1A then?
That's one of the allowable uses in B1A, but it has to go through the conditional use process itself. And that parcel wouldn't be appropriate for a gas station.
I wouldn't think so either. I'd much rather see that.
No, that's a horrible use of that area.
Okay. All right, I'd like to put those concerns to rest.
That would have to go with the, back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, if I'm correct, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions for the petitioner or staff? All right, thank you. I believe you have.
You're welcome.
10 minutes, 54 seconds remaining. We can now hear from members of the public. My advice is, you're going to want to make a line. There's a lot of people here tonight, and so if we're going to hear you all, and you want to get home at a reasonable time, it really helps things move faster if you kind of queue up. Also, just to give you a heads up, I forget the procedure a lot, so my advice is to recommend that you state your name, spell it for the record, and let us know if you are representing yourself, or if you're here in behalf of an organization. Because if you're on behalf of an organization, you get more time. Six minutes for individuals, is that correct? Six minutes for individuals. Six minutes for individuals and ten for members representing an organization. All right, let's start us off.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for hearing me tonight. My name is Carolyn Cookerts, that is C-A-R-O-L-Y-N, Cookerts, K-U-C-K-E-R-T-Z. I am a member of the Kingcade Elementary School PTA, but I am here testifying on behalf of myself. It is my belief that there is one major area of general welfare that has not been discussed tonight that is at risk through this rezoning, and that is the overpopulation of the schools. Last year, Sand Lake Elementary School and Kingcade Elementary School, the two elementary schools that serve that area, were both the most populous and the most overcrowded in the city of Anchorage. Sand Lake Elementary School had six hundred and twenty-eight students and was at one hundred and twenty percent of capacity. Kingcade Elementary School had five hundred and eighty-three students and was at a hundred and seventeen percent of the school's capacity. I reviewed the Anchorage School District's capital improvement plan for the years 2019 through 2025, and I saw absolutely no mention of either expanding and/or adding a new school to the school district. S4 was the one in charge of the new West Park sub-development that went out, that is also passed just west of Sand Lake Road. When that was being built, there was a giant sign that said a new school would be built there in order to handle the new students. As of today and ten years later, there are now houses sitting on that land instead of a new school. Also, in, there is, in their report, they talk about the need for single-family housing. According to the Alaska Department of Labor and Workforce Development, Alaska's vacancies are now at a ten-year high of eight percent for rent. There is actually no public necessity for building these homes at this time, and I understand the need for, you know, making money and developing, and that's, that's all well and good, except that we have left a major part of this plan out, and that is schools and children. We're talking about families, multifamilies, development, small children. And what I am seeing is classrooms with thirty-two kids and a first-grade teacher trying to pull her hair out. And I am seeing no plans and nobody mentioning any, any way that we are going to make these schools manageable or add another school. If we do have to add another school, then that falls onto the taxpayers. And at this day and time, with the state and the financial position that it is in and the municipality also claiming financial struggles, I don't know where we would come up for money for a new school. So I am against this rezoning for the fact that we have not investigated the overcrowding of the schools enough in the area, and I think that parents have not had a voice in this. And I think that while I may not be as educated or slick as some of the people who have presented here tonight, I do know that I have a little girl whose education is riding on whether or not there are enough teachers and schools to be able to handle her and all of the new families that are going to live in that area in Anchorage. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. I have a question for staff. To that end, I know that the school district, the school district is responsible for kind of the changing school boundaries. To what extent does the Planning and Zoning Commission have an obligation to take that into account?
It's not one of the approval criteria for a rezone. I would offer that, I got a call recently from ASD's demographer project team, I think they call the planning department regularly to try and be aware of developing areas where they might see increases in, you know, more families and more children that could potentially be going to school. There's also, in West Park Development, there's a park, I'm sorry, a school tract for an elementary school. It's a designated tract owned by the school district.
All right, thank you. We can hear from our next person. Oh, sorry, we have one more question for staff before we get to Commissioner Strike.
Along the testimony we had too, if I'm looking at this correctly, we've got R1A going to B1A and R1A going to R2M. So in theory, it's already zoned R1A. They're in their right to build anyway, housing. In fact, moving from R1A to B1A actually reduces the amount of housing and puts it into a business district. So there's fewer, under this proposal, there's actually fewer houses density actually ultimately being proposed for this total acreage.
Oh, Mr. Strike, Mr. Strike, the whole eighty acres of this fill site and the higher ground at the, at the quarter is zoned R1A. That is correct. And the proposed rezoned to B1A, although it allows residential development as well, it'd be likely developed for commercial, right? But the eight acres in Track Two, that's proposed for R2M, so that is an upzoning or increase in residential density, just to make that clear.
And then that's what I was tracking. Half the density, half the lot, track is going lower density, the other half is going higher density, call it a knit, but we're really not looking any more housing that they, now, later, that they can already build now.
Well, if you're looking, if you're laser-sharp looking just at Track, the ten acres that's the proposal for this zoning, it does increase the potential residential density. So it's, it's an increase, but, I mean, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, now you're up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is James Sanders, J-A-M-E-S-S-A-N-D-E-R-S, pretty simple. And I'm a thirty-year resident in the West Diamond Community, and I'm a Sea Cliff Condo Board Member, so I'm speaking on half of the condo association, although I won't take ten minutes. The Sea Cliff Condo Association represents twenty-four units directly across from the rezoning Track Two and Three. And I'm opposed to the proposed rezoning for some important reasons. Number one, the Sea Cliff Condo Association, after thoughtful consideration, is formally opposed to the rezoning. The Sand Lake Community Council, considering the rezoning in its May meeting, overwhelmingly voted against the rezoning, overwhelmingly. The preponderance of letters in the commission's packet are in opposition to the rezoning. It's important to note that the opposition is just not a casual objection to change and development, where there are some specific concerns that really, we feel, haven't been addressed, and you've already touched upon some of them. The planning department's staff analysis for rezoning is a well-written document and lays out why the proposal should be, should be done. There's no real argument with the document. However, there are several areas that we felt are not adequately addressed, and I'm primarily going to talk about the rezoning of B1A. I hope I keep this straight. There's overwhelming opposition to bringing a commercial zone into this residential area because B1A rezoning opens up the area to a number of businesses that you already, you know, talked about. And we really don't want or need new business in the area. I think it's important for you to know, within a mile of this area that's being proposed to change, there is already a Holiday Gas Station and a Quick Stop. There's a Cars Grocery Store and a Strip Mall. There's four restaurants. There's a McDonald's and there's a Taco Bell. There's two coffee venues. There's office and commercial space in use and for rent. There's two large ten-acre parcels of commercial land for sale or lease. There are two liquor stores, and there's a bowling alley with a bar. There's a lot going out already in our neighborhood. If the land is rezoned to B1A, we feel we don't know what will go in. Potentially, there could be a gas station. There could be a liquor store. There could be a fast food restaurant, not a Rustic Goat, but another fast food restaurant, which brings a lot of traffic. It could be a marijuana shop. We don't know, there's just that uncertainty out there. The uncertainty of this type of development and potential unpacks are our major concern. Furthermore, the twenty-four Sea Cliff Plaza condos and the thirty-six Sea Cliff Terrace condos and the adjacent ninety-plus homes are all on a common well system. We're not on city water. All of the, although the planning department found potential environment, no potential environmental impact, it really didn't address this issue. There will be a wastewater holding pond in the new development area. Our concern is, what happens to the dog waste that runs into there? The pesticides, the weed killer, the fuel spills that just happen by living? When they go into these holding ponds, when they run off from the development, do they just evaporate or do they go into the groundwater? I'm concerned because I drink that water. All the residency in this hundred-plus area drink that water. Also, the B1A is adjacent to the new traffic circle, and that's noted. That was a tremendous approval to the intersection of West Diamond and Sand Lake Road. Our concern is now what's going to happen once we have a commercial zone right on that corner. Not knowing what the business is going to be and what the impact and how it's going to bring in new traffic is a big concern. It's going to be enough having potentially a hundred-plus residences already coming in and out of that area, but the commercial development is the one that has the greatest concern and potentially the greatest impact for us. I'd also like to note that the paved walkway along Long West Diamond, right next to the area proposed for rezoning, crosses the busy cross circle that was just constructed. This walkway is a busy thoroughfare for numerous pedestrians, bikers, dog walkers, and children. In fact, it's an extension of the Coastal Zone Trail. So there is, there is a lot of activity that goes along that area and through that area. Making this a commercial area will potentially diminish the aesthetics and the safety of that pathway. So in conclusion, the residents of this area do not want or need commercial development at the intersection of Sand Lake Road and West Diamond Boulevard. We feel that we have it adequately covered within a short walking distance of our home. I walk it, I know. So I thank you for your consideration, and we hope you will consider ours.
Thank you. I actually had a follow-up question for staff. A couple of uses were brought up in that public comment that I wanted to check to see if they're allowed in B1A districts. Are bars allowed in a B1A district?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, that's not correct. B1A bars are prohibited, so are marijuana establishments. All types of marijuana establishments are prohibited and bars are prohibited. I apologize.
Okay, thank you. I think there was, trying to remember if there was one other one I knew I was going to ask about marijuana as well. No, that'll do it for now. Thank you.
My name is Frank Rast. I'm a thirty-six-year Anchorage resident and a twenty-year resident of Sand Lake. My main objection to this whole thing is there's a process for doing rezones. The process hasn't been followed. That they submitted their application in August when the community council wasn't meeting, scheduled for October, the community council hasn't had a chance to go over this with the staff and the developer and work out, what's this going to look like? Previous rezones in West Park, the developers spent a lot of time doing renderings so people know what this is going to look like. An Arlene Diamond rezone, they did lots of renderings so everybody knows what this is going to look like. Tonight, Tom shows something on the 2040 plan. They've used a complicated laddering approach to take an asterisk off the West Anchorage District Plan, get that into the 2040 land use plan, and instant, we've got an R2M business district. There's never been any analysis in the West Anchorage District Plan for business at this location. This gentleman correctly pointed out, there's eight acres of vacant business land in the Jewel Lake Diamond Town Center, which the West Anchorage District Plan said we should promote. We want to put our, focus our business in this corridor so we can support transit and services, okay? So now, how do we know we're not going to get a Zamaral Strip Mall here at the corner of Diamond and Sand Lake Road that nobody needs? And is this for the best welfare of the community? What are the tax-based tax cap implications? Has there been any analysis done? We can all agree we need more housing. Right, we all need more housing. The densities, they're saying up to fifteen, their land use policy says you should be within a quarter-mile of transit, walking distance. So are we going to have bus service out here now? I don't know. It hasn't been analyzed, and it hasn't been looked at. This whole process is rushed. I'm asking the Planning and Zoning Commission for the developer and planning to come back with the community and actually do some planning work. This is a big deal to the community, a big deal. We all agree that we need more housing. So isn't ten acres of housing better at this site than eight acres of housing and a strip mall? I don't know. The analysis hasn't been done. The process hasn't been followed. Francis correctly pointed out, we're bound by policies, procedures, and process, okay? Look at the process. The West Anchorage District Plan, there was an asterisk. That was the only thing in the West Anchorage District Plan that said there might be business here. There was no analysis, it's not in the implementation, it's not in executive summary. But the West Anchorage District Plan does say, we want to maintain the semi-rural character of Sand Lake. So does a Zamaral Strip Mall fit in the character of this neighborhood of residential housing when that stuff is right down there at the Jewel Lake Diamond Town Center? That's where the district plan said, let's focus our higher densities and our commercial so we can afford the services like bus. So is this high density going to require bus service in ten years? Because their policy says it should. Their policy says anything more than seven dwelling units per acre should be within a quarter-mile of transit. So what is the appropriate density for this ten acres? Is it fifteen dwelling units per acre, which is allowed, but we haven't seen what they want to do? So we don't know what it's going to look like. What's this two acres of business going to look like? We don't know, and has there been any analysis done that it's not going to be a road that's tax-based? My personal belief is that ten acres of housing is going to be better on a cost-benefit basis for our tax base in the future than commercial. That's just my biased opinion. My feeling is analysis should be done so the community knows what we're going to get here. So I'm just asking for Planning and Zoning Commission to do the right thing and defer action on this until more analysis is done on what this is going to look like and what it's going to end up as. Because again, I want to reiterate, there's a process, right? We've changed, they took a process, they took an asterisk on the West Anchorage District Plan and turned that into something in the 2040 land use plan, and now they're saying, bingo, you know, we're meeting all the requirements. But the truth is, this doesn't, just because some plan says it's suitable for this, does that mean it's the best for this, for the community? I don't know, and I don't think the analysis has been done. Thank you for your time.
Can you actually spell your last name for the record?
Yeah. R-A-S-T.
Thank you.
Brian could tell you that. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for taking testimony on this. My name is Therese Stokes. It's spelled T-H-E-R-E-S-E, last name S-T-O-K-E-S, and I live right across Diamond Boulevard from Track Two and Three. And I was reading through the comments in here and the question and answer. I haven't read the entire package yet, I'm not sure of the total context, but I read in here a statement, ADOT will not give you access onto Diamond Boulevard, and I'm here to tell you that access has been built. It's paved to finish grade, and it was built this summer. And I didn't know if everybody was aware of that. It's just, and that really makes me concerned about the whole, the speed of the process like Mr. Rast was saying. What is the process here? It seems like it's, it's just, you know, ready, fire, aim. And I just want to vent my frustration on that the due process isn't being followed in this case. And also, go on record, as opposed to having businesses on that And also go on record as opposed to having businesses on that corner. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to make public comment at this time? I was expecting a lot more of you guys wanting to speak. Better start lining up if you want to.
Well, some good things have already been said. My name is Owen Carey. Thank you, Madam Chairman, for the opportunity to speak. And I represent my family, who has lived kitty-corner to the proposed site, moved into the area in 1972, and grew up with gravel pits and the noise of the trucks and slamming and banging waking me up every morning. And so I'm very pleased to see that there's going to be a change, that fairly soon the noise of the gravel trucks will cease. We're looking forward to that. It's been zoned R1A all this time, and now we knew with promises that this will be a open space, parks, soccer fields, so on and so forth. If nothing else, as Commissioner Strike pointed out, this is an R1A area, the entire 80 acres. And so, again, that can always be built. That's the covenant with the neighborhood that R1A was there. Now, the proposed changes, two changes. One is for the R2M, and the second one for the B1A. Of course, the B1A, again, as Commissioner Strike has pointed out, changes, and we're losing potential housing when the 2040 plan calls for more housing in Anchorage. And so we're, to create a business district, we would lose housing and the potential for And I want to point out this maroon asterisk, this phantom asterisk that has appeared. I think that it's to the consternation of a lot of people here tonight, that it is really not purposefully drawn out. And I'd like to take whoever created that maroon asterisk out for a beer and just ask, where did that come from? So, again, I just want to point out we're losing housing by changing from R1A to B1A. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make public comment at this time?
My name's Carol Ashlock, A-S-H-L-O-C-K. I've lived for about 30 years directly across from the proposed, whatever, commercial gas station. Different things have been said at different times by the engineers themselves, et cetera. But every time it's a question, then the answer seems to change. And my family actually finished those units out in the mid-'70s. I have a couple of points to make here. One is looking at what happened before, and I've been trying to research back when it was approved, when it was changed again by the Sand Lake Community Council's support because they had shut them down for years. My own family's bought gravel to build our, we do development, but we do everything by the book properly. We're very careful about that for 50, 60 years, and we continue to do so. So what happened was, then they said, hey, we want to be able to do snow dump. Want to do snow dump in the winter. Okay, so for a dozen-plus years, all winter long, you know, deet, 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 shovel smack in the back of those trucks to get that sticky snow out. And it's not just early in the morning, you hear it all night long. But that was okay because the agreement, and not just a gentleman's agreement, some kind of agreement was made to build those soccer fields. And that front little corner piece was allowed to be a clubhouse for the ball teams. Now, we come along and decide, well, maybe we could make more money doing something else. It's really, you know, as Jim pointed out, less than a mile away, we've got commercial, we've got cars. There's a reason people built and established their families there and have put the money into their properties there. Very Carey family that homesteaded that many years ago. And the schools, that's a serious impact. Schools were supposed to be built, school was supposed to be built across the street for those gravel pits, but the numbers didn't add up. We knew what was promised didn't add up. But we plan and zone, we change the zoning, we do a blanket change, we don't pay attention. And Mr. Strike, you're correct, except for the fact that that's two acres. It's not half that property, okay? It's a small amount, but it doesn't take much to do so much damage. You know, they put a little turnout in there. The crime has increased tremendously just because of that. You know, these are not near your homes. This is at my home, right across the street. I could walk right to that. And I can get warm croissants down at the cars, thank you very much. So I have great concern about that. Now, I do not feel that it is consistent with the 2040 plan or the West District Plan, even though Francis goes through details and is always the cheerleader for all development. When you really look at that, as well as the muni, as well as our zoning, these are our laws. These are what we have. These are what you guys have. This is where your teeth are. So I happen to have a little map of the 2040 plan, and I'd like to point out a couple of things in it. And I'm sorry I don't have copies for you to look at up close.
I just wanted to say thanks for providing a big map. I wish that some of our petitioners and our own staff had. It would have been helpful.
Sure. I'm sorry, can you see, Mr. Gardener? So here's the parcel in question, okay? Oh, thanks. Here's the parcel in question, right here. I need to be able to get to it, though. So that compact mixed residential low is this little corner here. That's where the little ballpark, you know, like the chalet at Kincaid, you know, clubhouse for the kids are supposed to go. All the rest of this that is green is other open space. This is the most current 2040 map. Maybe you can take it up there and walk by. Now, the other thing that you can see on that, see those circles that are on there? Guess what those circles are? Those circles are town centers and regional commercial centers defined by the 2040 plan and reflected in the West Anchorage District Plan and all the other hillside, et cetera, district plans. It's consistent. Guess where that is? Jewel Lake and Diamond, less than a mile away. For 30 years, we haven't had public transportation. They're not interested in doing it now, it's just getting cut back. So I really would encourage you to scramble, scramble, oh, affordable housing. Yeah, that sounds great, and those heartstrings, but what is the reality of that? And that's what I'm asking you all. What is the reality of that and paying real close attention? Shucks, we have land at East 26 and, East 24th or East 26th and Lake Otis. Now, that's developable land. That's multiple family workforce. That's multiple transit, housing, schools, hospitals, universities. That's the kind of property that should be for that. I'm not trying to promote that right now, but I'm saying that it is available. But yet, we look at what's marked on here, regional commercial centers. Why do we have these laws? Why are you all setting these things? Why is Assembly setting zoning if we're not going to follow it? To quote a current Assembly member, well, it's just zoning. What difference does it make? Well, it should make some difference. Or you're going to live in Houston, where there is no zoning, and you get a barber shop in your next-door neighbor's yard. So I wish you'd give some serious consideration to this. Thank you very much. Are there any questions?
Commissioner Robinson.
Yeah, thanks for your testimony. So the West Anchorage District Plan does show that as low, medium intensity. So I guess both the 2040 plan and the West Anchorage District Plan had that slightly darker color of yellow than what is generally presumed to be single-family zoning. And so I'm just, I'm trying to get my head around, you know, and I think, I'd like to dig in a little bit more when you said the commercial, the potential for commercial somehow serving the recreational kind of development. I mean, I do recall whether it was through a conditional use permit process when they came in seeing some maps of those, you know, but I, so maybe, number one, I mean, can you at least acknowledge that the area has been, the five acres anyway, has been designated as higher-intensity housing than R1A?
I see what is designated on here, and I see, you know, we already have, of course, we're going to be back to see you in November, right? Because we're trying to already amend existing conditional use. And that includes almost 80 acres. Oh, yeah, no, we're not talking two and eight acres.
But can you, so, so-
I mean, come on.
Aside from that residential designation, that is at least clear to me that it's on the last two adopted plans that we've had, half of the area, they're asking for, to double that. That's what, that's part of their action here tonight. But this commercial thing associated with the recreation, where did that come from? Where do you think that comes from? That comes from, you said it was kind of like a gentleman's agreement, but not really-
Commercial, you mean, you mean the clubhouse?
Yeah, like where do you, where did you get that concept?
Because of the zoning, the zoning that it was changed to. The zoning, the whole thing isn't all R1. I mean, that's why they're trying to get, that's why they're trying to go to a B1A on that, you know? So, I mean, it's what the understanding was, and that had to go through a process. That wasn't just a chat in the neighborhood.
I'm just trying to figure out where, where that was ever stated, and maybe staff can weigh in on it later, but I appreciate your-
Yeah, I know, I've been trying to find it, and I've just had, I served you a few other things. So it's tough reading through all this, for sure. But, you know, the concern is the series of things. That's the problem, too.
I got it. No, I got it. But I appreciate your testimony. Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Anderson, he may have further questions for you.
I don't have a specific question for this petitioner, or for this, no, I don't, sorry, I don't have a specific question.
And I'm sorry, I don't mean to be short of patience, but after so many years of this, I'm just, you know, what is your question, sir?
Not specifically a question for you, but I think that there was, in my mind, I had an idea of what commercial designated as small-scale commercial in the West Anchorage District Plan. And after listening to a lot of the public comment, I get the idea that they have a different, there's a different opinion of what the commercial allowed would be there. I've heard lots of references to strip malls and unknown commercial uses. And I just want to make sure that I'm understanding the same thing that the West Anchorage District Plan says, is that a small-scale commercial is neighborhood convenience services. It says coffee shops, forests, bakeries, convenience-scale grocery, and that there's one small-scale commercial facility allowed at each location. So I don't, in my mind, I don't see that as a strip mall. I see that as a neighborhood serving convenience. But I want to make sure that I'm, I have the right understanding and I'm not misinterpreting something.
You know, the developer, the owner of the property can't promise what will be developed there because even if they had a plan for how it would be developed, it still might be subject to change through, you know, the building permit review and the future site plan review or whatever. If you rezone the property, if you recommend approval to rezone the property, Track Three to B1A, all the uses that are allowed in the B1A district are potential uses of the property. And the list is in, the table of allowed uses in Chapter Five. Ms. Bailey, you know, asked about a couple of them. Marijuana is prohibited, bars are prohibited, grocery stores, offices, financial institutions. A number of commercial uses are allowed in the B1A district, bakeries and that. A gas station is a conditional use permit, and there are some other uses that require a conditional use permit, which is a public hearing in front of this committee, this body.
So if the two acres were rezoned to B1A, is there, there would, there would be a subsequent land use action to subdivide or plat this parcel, or would it all be developed? Would there be another chance for some sort of body like ours to look at this requirement from the West Anchorage District Plan and say that if they want to put a strip mall in there, that that's not a compatible use per this plan? Or is this, or is this the step that would determine that?
The property is subdivided, and should the Assembly adopt the rezone that's proposed, this application, then it would only take a building permit to develop a by-right use in that zoning district.
I'm sorry, I was done, but every step matters. That's the point to this commission. Every step you take matters. It's significant.
Thank you. Also, I just wanted to comment, you said you're running out of patience, and I just want to say that you, as everyone else who testified today, I want to thank you for being polite. I have often had commenters come in and make derogatory comments about other members, and hearing everyone be very cordial always makes me take every comment with more weight. And so I want to thank you, and you did not lose any patience. Commissioner O'Quinn.
I just wanted to point out that a lot of the commercial uses that we've talked about here tonight, if they're going to be in excess of 20,000 square feet, they are going to be required to come back before the Planning Department for a major site plan review. And so we, there is an additional layer, if I'm not mistaken, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Commissioner Robinson.
Yeah, if I could, just following up with, I think Mr. Anderson's point, which is, we get to this asterisk because it's in the West Anchorage District Plan. That's what references commercial. And it doesn't just say any B1A commercial. It actually has specific, specific language. And one of the, one of the bullet points that was not highlighted by the petitioner on the page that he provided says, "Proposed small-scale commercial development applications shall include a site plan identifying connection points for potential non-motorized access to surrounding neighborhoods and an assessment of traffic, pedestrian, bicycle interactions, and safety considerations." Without some special action by us, that won't come up in the course of normal development if this were to be rezoned to B1A. So I'm just, I'm just stating it, and I'd like staff's concurrence on that. But that is, that, to me, is not just any B1A. That's a very specific section. If we're going to go to this plan for a very specific asterisk, then we're going to take everything that goes along with it.
I don't know about that, Mr. Robinson. I think the, Chapter Seven, the Title 21, has a whole host of-
No, no, I'm sorry, and I can say this because it's my second-to-last meeting, but you can't, you can't pick and choose parts of the plan. If we're going to go with the plan, we have to look at all the plan. And I'm not going to debate you, but that's, just, thanks for clarifying.
My name is Joan Priestley, J-O-A-N-P-R-I-E-S-T-L-E-Y. I'm a property owner in Anchorage and a concerned citizen. And I'm going to take a somewhat different tact than the other folks who've testified. I'm going to talk about some of the legal aspects of this because there are, I think, some severe legal problems with this rezone. I'm going to make several, three points, three main points. Number one, Title 21.03.160A is the place you have to look for the purpose of rezones. And that section uses the word necessity or necessary three times. And the, a rezone must be necessary based on a change in conditions in the neighborhood, which is mainly deterioration, or a change in public policy, and there must be a public need for the rezone. Our Supreme Court has defined necessary to mean compelling justification. And case law has established that the burden is on the applicant to state by clear and convincing evidence that there is a compelling justification for this rezone. And if you look at the application narrative, though, it fails to prove or even address this issue. It starts off necessity and justification and says not word one about necessity or justification. And there has been no change in conditions in the neighborhood. There is no new radical public policy that would necessitate this rezone, and there's no public need in this area for yet another strip mall, as Carol Ashlock has pointed out. So it fails to meet the mandatory criteria for necessity. Point number two, a rezone also must meet nine criteria, all nine. And I believe it fails to meet number four, which reads, "The rezone is compatible with surrounding zoning and development and protects areas from incompatible land uses or development This parcel is surrounded completely by R1 on the south, R1A in the west and north, and open space on the east. If we look at eight acres, they want to, they want to rezone to the R2- If we look at eight acres, they want to, they want to rezone to the, the R, R2M, it has a maximum of 15 units per acre, that is 120 units that they could cram into this parcel, parcel area, there's nothing like that in the entire surrounding area, if you look at the map. Number three, without showing necessity or compatibility, but, but, that does not confer substantial benefit to the area, but does produce a detriment in terms of excess traffic, unreasonable density, no bus service, and an impact on schools, this rezone meets the definition of spot zoning, which is considered an impermissible and in this state, illegal zone, zone change. Spot zoning, by definition, confers a lot of benefit to the developers, but does not reasonably confer substantial benefit to the community or the general, the immediate community or the general welfare. And this is all from case law I've been looking at. Our Supreme Court has also said, "A rezone can comply with, with the comprehensive plan and the district plan and still be illegal impermissible spot zoning." Point number four, you don't have to give them what, what they want by any means, now, you could deny both applications entirely, R1A allows reasonable development, and B1A is not needed in this location at all. Or you could okay a, a, a change to R1, it's a higher density, five units per acre, smaller lots, it's a reasonable increase in the density development. Or you could choose to limit the density of even an R2M to single-family detached dwellings like the rest of the neighborhood at five per acre, like the R1. I think that kind of, of change is much more reasonable if you, if you don't want to just deny these, these, um, rezones, uh, in total, and will probably help you withstand the legal challenge that is going to come forward about this issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you a lot for your comments. Commissioner Gardner.
Thank you for your comments. I was just wondering if you could, um, in the beginning, when you were speaking about the references to necessity, if you could identify again-
You have to holler, I'm sorry.
Sorry. In the beginning of your testimony, you referenced, um, references to necessity in the code, and I was just wondering if you could identify again the specific sections that you were looking to.
Oh, it's, it's Title 21, point oh three, point one six oh, capital A, purpose, and there's another section in Title 21, uh, chapter one, that says, notwithstanding any other section, this purpose section is the only one that is applicable for rezones. So you don't have to look anywhere else in Title 21, 160A is it.
Thank you.
And they use the word necessity three times, and, and they use the mandatory command "shall" also, it shall be proven, and court cases have said it has to be proven by the applicant by clear and convincing evidence, and this is the elephant in the room that
I'm just going to try to give everyone a heads up on where we're going from here.
in previous applications, no one wanted to talk about, but this is the way the law is
At the beginning of the meeting, we condensed both of this into one, um, item, that way
written in Title 21, and this is the way the Alaska Supreme Court and other Supreme Courts
you didn't have to come up and say the same thing about both, and the petitioner didn't- oh, sorry, I forgot that the petitioner has time left for rebuttal.
and the Supreme Court have defined the, these rules as they apply to rezones.
So I'm going to save that talk for later, and we can hear from the petitioner, sorry about that. Is anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this matter? I believe you have 10 minutes and 54 seconds left for rebuttal.
Okay, thank you.
Going once, going twice, once I close it, you can't speak? All right, we are closing the public comment period. Um, I don't know about the rest of the staff, but I know that I have drank my entire drink, and I need a bathroom break, so we are going to take a five-minute recess, and then we will be back.
In rebuttal, just like to, just briefly respond or comment on some of the issues brought up. The overcrowding of the schools is something that is always having to, it always comes up on every single, uh, development in town where you're increasing density or developing a new area, and that's upon the school district, actually, since Anchorage, they need to change the boundaries of the school district for that particular school, then, then that's what they have to do, it's their responsibility to take care of that kind of thing. The commercial has been, that commercial area has been in the plan since starting in 2009, they spent a couple, three years working on the West Anchorage District Plan in '09, then it was approved, and I think it was in 2012, so it was about three and a half years or so through that process, then it also stayed in the, uh, in the 2040 Plan, of course, which was in process, I don't have the exact time on that, but I think it was about two or three years, um, in the planning stages, and through multiple tens of community council meetings for each one of those plans. Any concern with water and drainage safety is a good question to bring up, and that's always a, a big concern, and the, the one good thing about that is any new development, of course, is, as you know, has to strictly go by all the new building codes and drainage codes, and if you have any just, uh, more specific questions with that, we have the engineers here tonight. But basically, you can't allow any water to go off onto your neighbor's property, or obviously any pollution or anything like that. As far as losing housing from the B1A, one A, excuse me, the overall, of course, is we're going to be increasing the housing, that's the whole, one of the whole points and, uh, benefits of this here, area, we lose a little bit on the B1A, the two, uh, actually we don't, because you can do a mixed use in, in B1A, so you can't actually add housing in there, though most likely probably wouldn't, but the overall effect is that we'd be gaining housing units over the existing R1A. The clubhouse issue, uh, there's been nothing along those lines that has been mentioned in any of the plans or discussions that, that I know of, and as far as the W, um, ADP and the 2040 Plan. Crime, bus system, I hope as the city grows, the, the bus system will expand and, and take care of some of these areas, actually, areas all over town, I know right now there's been a reduction in, in some of the bus system. Hopefully, that won't reverse sometimes, maybe when the economy gets a little better. Oh, and the, let's see, the issue on that trail there, on the, um, "Proposed small-scale commercial development application include a site plan identifying connection points," that's connecting into the, uh, the bike trails in the area is actually one of the, one of the coolest things, and I, I brought that up, I think, in the, in the narrative of talking about people able to ride their bikes and walk to this area, instead of having to drive the mile over to the Jewel Lake area to reach any of these, um, type of developments. I think that about does it for now. Thank you.
Commissioner Looney.
Yeah, thank you for your testimony. I had a couple of questions, um, I was a little surprised that the topic of, um, stormwater wasn't more of an issue.
A what?
Stormwater. I, I really hadn't heard it brought up hardly at all. Um, I'm not personally concerned about it, but I know that, I expected that, I know how sensitive it is in nearby, uh, community. Is there a plan, or has there been, uh, a, um, developed idea for how to address any, um, contamination of aquifer in this area?
Looking to the engineers here. Uh, Mr. Grant Matthews with Triad Engineering.
Yeah, my name's Grant Matthews, M-A-T-H-E-W-S, I'm with Triad Engineering. Uh, we did a preliminary drainage analysis for this area, uh, but any development would meet the municipal drainage code, uh, the Anchorage Stormwater Manual is, uh, pretty, uh, expansive and has a lot of requirements, um, it involves some type of green infrastructure, it would most likely be a retention pond, uh, at the surface, which would be, uh, pretty far removed from any, any aquifer, uh, but the exact drainage analysis would be done at the time of development and remove, or reviewed, uh, through building safety.
Well, the other question I had was access, at least one place I think I read that, uh, Diamond Access would not be allowed, but then I think I read that it would be allowed, not that we're, not that we're doing a site plan here today, but, um, is, that is one of the concerns I heard from the public.
Yeah, correct, and that, that particular cause, or clause, excuse me, is in the conditional use permit for that, uh, for the fill site area, and that was specifically relating to, uh, the trucks coming in, the side dumps and whatnot coming in there, and that, so that entrance on the diamond is not to be used for, uh, those type of trucks, it's only going to be used for the future development, residential development in there. It's a good point, though, it's, it was a little confusing.
Ken? All right, Commissioner Robinson.
Thank you. I heard testimony, maybe, that you, um, had a meeting when the community council wasn't in session, did you, did you have your required meeting per the code?
Yeah, yes, we did.
Okay. Um, this come up a couple of times, but this, uh, open space area, and, and I've seen this diagram before of soccer fields and recreational spaces, and, and I, I kind of either heard or insinuated, hearing through testimony tonight, the, um, almost this promise, this future promise of the petitioner delivering some sort of rec use. Where has the community sort of gotten that, that perception? And where, and when have those images been brought forward and shared? I know I've seen them, so I'm guessing they were at a conditional use permit process, but they've been out there.
Correct, yeah, but it, it's always, it is a, a very particular situation here where it's, um, they talk about what the final site plan can be, and it all, has always stated that ASNG will still retain ownership of the property, you know, it even states in the conditional use permit, there's certain things that, that could be, uh, built in there, like, you know, like gardens, uh, community gardens, there can be, uh, greenhouses for, that grow things for sale, for, for retail sale, uh, there could be, um, like a Christmas tree farm, that kind of thing in there.
No, but I specifically remember seeing soccer fields, you know, not just Christmas tree farms.
Yeah, that's in the, um-
I mean, that to me communicates-
Yeah, I don't have a copy of that, that's part of the conditional use permit that you guys will see here in another-
Right, but I'm trying to put it all together here, right? So, so if, 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 if it feels like it's, it's an amenity, I mean, you could look at a soccer field as a, as a nuisance, if it generates traffic and noise and everything else, but it also, as someone with young kids, could be an amenity, so I'm just trying to figure out when, when this amenity, why, why I've seen images and why people in the public have seen images of this amenity, and how it all connects to this application.
Well, there, yeah, there are two separate cases, and what, what you've seen is part of the conditional use permit, uh, that's been in existence there for quite a while, it's been amended as we've gone along.
Right, but we're supposed to evaluate adjacent uses, right, and how it all fits together.
How it fits together, I'm sorry.
Both now and in the future. We're, I mean, part of our application is to examine the impact to and from adjacent properties, and its consistency there, and so it's a little bit tricky in this case because we have an existing operation, that's an industrial operation, with sort of a, a promise or a potential dream that it becomes something else that sounds like may or may not be shared with, with members of the public.
I would just add that specifically for the rezoning part of the application, it says that you must find that it's compatible with surrounding zoning and development and protects areas designated for specific uses, or designated, um, on the zoning map from incompatible land or developmental intensities. So I think Commissioner Robinson makes a good point that we have to evaluate everything that's around it, as it is-
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, it's totally, it's legit, I mean, we've seen it, you, you all have, maybe not through this case, but have provided this diagram, and we're trying to understand how it potentially fits.
Right, so the, the next case that, that you will see here in probably about two months, or somewhere in there, depending on the schedule, will have, it'll be an amendment showing the new grading plan, uh, going around this extra five acres that we're converting to, hopefully converting to R2M zoning, so that area will be coming out of that total of seventy acres or eighty acres or so.
I get that, but are you bringing forward these images that you shared previously at the last time the conditional use was, permit was, was updated?
There's going to be those, and then we're also going to hopefully improve on it.
So, it sounds like a piece of information we might be interested in, so, and then if, if I just understand, and potentially interested in, in understanding how we would make a decision here tonight, but if I, if I, if I were to just look at the commercial and the residential, um, portions of the rezone, just the land that you have in front, uh, of us tonight, is, is the plan, would, would the plan be to develop those concurrently?
Most likely.
Okay.
Uh, they would not be actually tied together, but they're, they are going to be integrated because the access to the B1A, uh, from track three is going to come through track two, because we're keeping all the access points quite a ways away from the, the existing turnabout there for obvious reasons. So the, the access along Diamond is six or 700 feet east of the turnaround, and the one access that's going to come into track two is, I think, fi- five or 600 feet north of the turnaround.
Thanks.
Um, I just wanted to address one more issue that was mentioned in public comments was the, uh, traffic in the area. A lot of the community members here were concerned about what's going to happen with the roundabout, what's going to happen with the pedestrians that come into the area, is there a plan moving forward for how this is going to progress?
Yeah, well, as far as the, the turnabout, turnaround is, uh, concerned, we're, we're keeping the access points, the driveway or roadway access points as far away from the turnaround as we can, so there's not conflict, and of course, the, the access points will have their turn lanes, all according to the TIA, depending on, you know, at, at the time of the site plan, when that comes in.
And so just to clarify for the members of the community here that may not know acronyms, can you explain what a TIA is and when it would be appropriate and-
A, a traffic impact analysis would, would most likely be appropriate, I think it's even specified in here in this one clause, uh, that it needs to happen, you know, at, at the time of the site plan.
So-
And then that, that's real typical, especially with the commercial.
So if this moved forward, there would have to be a traffic impact analysis done in the future?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Spinelli.
Um, following up on Commissioner Robinson's questions, can, would the petitioner yourself like to just elaborate on the future plans for the open space?
Uh, the, you, for one, you're going to see this in about two months, that's going to be-
Yeah, we know that, but tonight is tonight, and you want us to decide tonight, correct?
Yeah, well, for, for the zoning, correct.
So if you would like to, you can, otherwise you could just say no.
Yeah, well, we're taking it to these guys here in another three weeks or four weeks or somewhere in there, and everybody's going to see everything. So the, the plan right now is to, uh, reconform some of the contours, uh, from the original plan to match this existing, how the, the configuration of track two and track three. And we've moved the, uh, the drainage areas a little bit further to the east, uh, just a little bit, and, I'm sorry, what more do you want to add?
I'm, I'm more concerned, like, I guess, changing some contours, that seems pretty basic, like, anything you do, you're going to change some contours on the land, I was just curious what they intend to use it for, if, it might sell the case a little bit better if-
So if this moved forward, there would have to be a traffic impact analysis done in the future?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Spinelli?
Following up on Commissioner Robinson's questions, would the petitioner yourself like to just elaborate on the future plans for the open space?
For one, you're going to see this in about two months. That's going to be...
Yeah, we know that, but tonight is tonight, and you want us to decide tonight, correct?
Yeah, well, for the zoning.
So if you would like to, you can, otherwise you could just say no.
Yeah, well, we're taking it to these guys here in another three weeks or four weeks or somewhere in there, and everybody's going to see everything. So the plan right now is to reconform some of the contours from the original plan to match this existing, how the configuration of Track 2 and Track 3. And we've moved the drainage areas a little bit further to the east, just a little bit. I'm sorry, what more do you want?
I'm more concerned, like, I guess, changing some contours. That seems pretty basic, like anything you do, you're going to change some contours on the land. I was just curious what they intend to use it for. It might sell the case a little bit better if we knew what was going to happen there.
Yeah, the entire, well, the existing conditional use permit, that actually ends in the area just being completely graded and grassed, well, seeded in grass with some topsoil. And then beyond that, into the future, was going to be plans worked out with the community. There's probably going to be multiple meetings with the Parks Department, with the community council meetings, with the Rugby Association, with all these other guys, to figure out what they want to do with that, what they would like to see. It's going to be a pretty long process. The existing conditional use right now doesn't expire for another five years. And there's been a lot of interest in it. And it's hard to say there's been, the Parks Department has wanted to, you know, it could be a trade that might happen in the future, but the funds have been low, so they haven't wanted to buy a part of this. And it's, so there's a lot of different options of what could be built on it, whether it's going to be baseball fields or rugby fields or soccer and things like that.
Commissioner Oakwood?
Just going back to the Track 2 and your site plan that you've indicated you're going to have to do for that and that the planning department's confirmed, you're not going to be able to access Track 3 without going through Track 2, is that correct, based on the distances from the roundabout that you just...
That is going to be how we're going to do that.
Right.
That's what we're assuming right now.
It seems like comprehensively planning the whole thing and bringing the whole thing before the planning department and maybe this commission, if that's required, would be most appropriate since it's going to have to happen simultaneously anyway, is that...
Well, the rezoning case that you're hearing tonight is completely separate from the conditional use permit. They run pretty different paths. And Track 2 and 3 can develop within itself and not be attached, if you will, to the remaining area, the remaining 70 acres or so.
Right, but Track 2 and 3 together could be reviewed simultaneously, right?
Oh, if someone came in, yeah, they could review both Track 2 and Track 3 at the same time if someone, builder was coming in and building the residential and the commercial, sure.
Because, I mean, you can't get to Track 3 without planning how to get across Track 2, right?
Correct.
Okay, so we would probably have a better idea at the time that you did your site plan for Track 2 as to what you were going to do with Track 3?
The site plan would take care of both of them, correct? Yeah, when we come in with a plan, an actual site plan at a later time for development, it's going to have to be a condition on Track 2 to provide access for Track 3.
So how do we ensure that the access to Track 3 is only across Track 2?
I don't think I have the appropriate... Oh, I'm sorry.
Is your question, like, only across Track 2 and not across Track 1? Is that what you're asking?
Well, how do we ensure that the only way Track 3 is accessed is across Track 2? Because we've heard that you said you weren't going to build access close to the roundabout.
Correct, yeah.
Is there something in code that's limiting access on just Track 3?
The underlying plat has a plat note stating Tracks 2 and 3 shall share access to West Diamond Boulevard through Track 2 unless alternative access approved by ADOT. I can tell you that ADOT is taking a really hard stance about Track 3 at the corner having its own access. They oppose it. They want, you know, all the property in this 80 acres to be accessed from a maximum of two driveways, one to Sand Lake and one to West Diamond Boulevard.
So as a follow-up question, hypothetically, if this is all approved, could someone create access on just, could they sell off Track 3 and that commercial establishment put in access just on Track 3? I'm hearing no, but I want to clarify.
So the recorded plat says Tracks 2 and 3 shall share access to West Diamond Boulevard through Track 2 unless an alternative access is approved by the Department, ADOT and Public Facility. So I guess if the state granted another driveway onto their facility, then there could be a separate driveway. But they started with not allowing any driveways, and then they sort of revised things to allow one driveway. I don't, you know, they've taken a hard stance against allowing a second driveway.
Sorry for a steam-related question, Commissioner Oakwood, and back to you.
No, that's, but there is another road, right, Sand Lake? So could there be access to Track 3 from Sand Lake?
Yeah, so the plat notes, I'm holding the recorded plat and...
Yeah, I can't read them.
No, that's okay, yeah. So it says, there's several plat notes. Prior to the development of Tracks, oh, okay, Tracks 2 and 3 shall share access to Sand Lake Road. Yeah, that's the only other thing to add to this. There's two plat notes. One says Tracks 2 and 3 shall share access to Sand Lake Road, and then the other one says Tracks 2 and 3 shall share access to West Diamond Boulevard through Track 2 unless an alternative access is approved. It appears that the maximum of one driveway to each road for these two tracks.
And that to get to Diamond, it has to be through Track 2?
That's right.
All right, Commissioner Looney?
I know, it appears to be a new driveway on Diamond. It really just goes right up to a couple of Jersey Bears. Is that where the, is that on Track 2 there? Or is it right on the line between the two kind of thing?
No, it's from the eastern lot lines, about 150 feet to the west. So it's lined up to fit with the residential development in there, so you have a tier of lots on each side of the road coming in.
That's a good example where like the, it crosses that trail. It's a pretty widely used trail along there, and probably, it's not the final layout right now, but the more appropriate solution there would be to sweep the trail in to make it a little safer crossing when you get to that, but there's plenty of time for that, I'm sure.
Yeah, that'd be a part of the site plan, the construction plans.
So do you have approval from DOT, I guess?
Oh, yeah, yeah, of course.
They have accepted it, okay.
Yeah, took a while, about a year.
Any other questions for the petitioner? All right, thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
And now, public comment is officially closed. Sorry about cutting you guys off earlier. So now, back to my long speech about how the rest of the night is going to proceed, both for clarification for our board and for you guys. At the beginning of the meeting, we kind of combined both of these issues together as one. From this point on, we're going to consider them separately. First, we're going to consider the comprehensive plan change, and then we're going to consider the rezoning. Also, just as a little alert, we always frame our motions in the affirmative, so don't get sticker shock if right away it's automatic approval. We are going to, you get a motion, we get a second, and then we discuss it. That being said, what's the will of the body? Is there a motion on the first agenda item on the comprehensive plan? And this is where it helps to be the chair because I don't have to come up with an emotion. Commissioner Spinelli?
In the matter of case 2019-0119, petitioner Anchorage Sand and Gravel requests to amend the 2040 land use plan to change the classification of five acres of land from open space to compact mixed residential low. I move that we approve this motion, this case.
Seconded by Commissioner Looney, would you like to speak to your motion?
I plan to support the motion. I didn't hear public testimony against it, and the municipal staff recommends it. That's all I have.
Would anybody else like to speak to the motion? All right, I'll jump in. Actually, I'll, Commissioner Anderson, you can go for it. I just wanted to fill in the airtime, but you got it.
So, yeah, the first case is an update to the 2040 land use plan.
Seth, can you get a little closer to the mic?
Yeah, sorry. First Amendment's a, or the first case is an amendment to the Anchorage 2040 land use plan map, and there is several specific criteria for approval. Kind of an overview, from what I understood from reading the package and through the discussion tonight, is the West Anchorage District Plan identifies this area as a certain land use density which matches what's being requested. It also identifies the area as a neighborhood commercial center, and this amendment is updating the 2040 land use plan to match what the Anchorage, the West Anchorage District Plan is showing. For approval criteria A, the proposed amendment is necessary in order to address one or more of the following: a change in projections or assumptions, or identification of new issues or needs. I think the original assumption was that that area was not going to be buildable based on the fill requirement or the anticipated fill, and that's changed. We have a changed understanding of how that land is going to be addressed. I might fill in some more shortly, but I'll let you go for a while.
Commissioner Robinson, you're next in the queue.
Thank you. I just wanted to sort of correct a little bit Mr. Anderson's findings. The West Anchorage District Plan and the Anchorage 2040 Plan did identify this area for this moderate density housing, but it was the five acres to the west of there. So our action here is taking that and expanding it five acres to the east. So I just, I think, to be clear, what we're finding is it's relevant that that was the finding in those plans, and those plans previously had only identified five acres as buildable, and therefore in criteria A, it's important to note that there is new information that instead of five acres, there are 10 acres. I think on condition B, the proposed amendment maintains the internal consistency of the comprehensive plan, I think that you still, generally speaking, have this largely open space reserved area. So it's not like we are taking the 80 acres and turning it all into this, which I think at that point I might argue differently on the consistency. But in this case, it's a smaller area within a larger area, so when I consider the sort of gross density, I still think that density is very much in range with surrounding properties, which again include single-family and not too far away, some attached housing as well. I think we have been stating in our plans for quite some time, despite where we are in our economy, we're looking at these decisions for longer term. And so when I think about housing needs and land for buildable housing, and generally speaking, we look for that in all areas of the municipality, not just in a few. And so being able to identify five additional acres for future housing at whatever time that is, to me, helps further the general goals of our comp plan.
Thank you, Commissioner Robinson. I would also like to add that towards Item B, that the proposed amendment maintains the internal consistency of the comprehensive plan and is consistent with other elements of the comprehensive plan. If you look at page 27 of the land use plan, it is identified as an area of growth. And so in order for that to happen, getting the rezone, or not the rezone, getting the entire area marked as compact mixed, or the land use plan identified as compact mixed residential low is consistent with that. I would also say that it is supported by Item D. The proposed amendment is to the comprehensive plan map. The request of land use designation is found to be equally or more supportive of the comprehensive plan goals, objective policy guidelines than old land use designations. I think preventing having this kind of split land use designation in the zoning world, we call it like split zone lots. I'm not sure what we call it in the land use, maybe split land use lots, but it cleans that up. I also find it to be in favor of the public interest by providing the additional residential And I also want to support Commissioner Robinson's findings that it is leaving 70 acres as open space. So that is also consistent with the land use plan map. Any otherbody wishing to speak on this motion? All right, call for a vote. And that motion passes. We are now moving on to the Item G2 on our agenda. Would someone like to make a motion? Do it. Commissioner Looney?
Okay, in case 2019-0118, in the effort to rezone from R1A to B1A and R2M, I, my motion is to approve the case.
Can I ask you a question, Commissioner? Just real quick, in order. Are we offering this as a sort of one action, a rezone, or does it need to be two actions given that it's two parcels that are being recommended for different zonings?
The staff report is just recommending there'd be one motion to approve the rezoning request for both tracks.
Okay.
And I would like to clarify with Commissioner Looney, are you making this in support of what the department recommendations, that is, subject to an effective clause requiring the conditional use for fill operation to be updated?
Yes, I'll clarify that, that's right. I guess we've heard a couple of connotations to that effect. So essentially, approve with the, with the understanding that the conditional use will be updated very shortly.
And is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Anderson, would you like to speak to your motion?
Sure. So essentially, the nine categories of analysis as far as whether this case meets the conditions for the rezone were spelled out pretty well. I find that generally, the rezone is in accordance with both the West Anchorage District Plan and the Anchorage 2040 Plan. And it really is implementing the zoning districts, these zoning districts implement the plans that have been put forward.
All right, I'm going to go next up. At the beginning of the day, I gave you all advice to speak to the approval criteria, and I'm going to go against my own advice, and I'm just going to speak about zoning in general and why I think this is a tough one. I think generally zoning is really important. You buy property, and it's one of the biggest investment any of you make. It's one of the biggest investment I make. And you do that based on the zoning, and you do that thinking, I'm going to get some assurance. It's a little bit of a safety net so that something unexpected doesn't come along. So one of the reasons you have zoning is so you can depend on it when you purchase your property. And so when I looked in this application and I saw the objections, I kind of went through this and been like, all right, I'm going to look through this and see how it's not allowed based on the approval criteria. However, when I went through the approval criteria, I couldn't find that. I know when I think about these things, I'm thinking about the same things a lot of you are in the face of it. Is this the best thing for the community? Is this following the process? And when I answer those questions, I can say that the process was followed here. I know it doesn't seem like it was because oftentimes something comes up late in the game, and this is the first time you've heard about it. But this is a process that's continued from, when was the West Anchorage District Plan approved? Was it 2012? And then when I first became a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, I think that was 2015, 16? I remember going through the 2040 land use plan. And so this is stuff that's not coming out completely out of the blue. These were things that were in those plans, were labeled, and we do that for multiple reasons. One, for everyone in the neighborhood, but we also do it for the people that are going to be buying the property. They need to know when they are buying this property or the owners of those property when they move forward, that they can develop according to what's in that plan. And when I looked at this plan, I saw...
And when I looked at this plan, I saw that the plan showed that it was set to be compact mixed residential low, which is based on the 2040 Land Use Plan, R2M. I saw based on the fact that it was compact mixed residential low, that B1A is allowed only if it's in your neighborhood plan. And so I went into the neighborhood plan, and I was actually shocked to see a star asterisk on this exact spot. And I then went and looked at page twenty-seven of the land use plan and saw this was set up as an area for growth. So this was, I think, one of the things that's tough is we're becoming a bigger city, is no one wants that growth to happen in our backyard. I always want it to happen down the street from me. No one wants that intensive use there, no one wants it coming in. However, it has to go somewhere, which is why we've identified it in our 2040 Plan. And that's what I saw. So when we say, is this, another comment I heard from a lot of people is, is this best for the community? You're like, I think about it the same way as a property owner. I'm like, I want the Rustic Goat as my neighbor, or in Gerwood, I want it to be the Gerwood Brewing Company in walking distance. But then the same thing comes up, and it's a very similar story, is we hear something about like Panda Express coming, and there's, someone doesn't want something that's a fast food lot, but they want the Rustic Goat. Based on zoning, we can't pick and choose. It's not my job up here when I'm deciding the zoning, whether, what exact establishment goes in. I'm only deciding the use. To that end, going to the approval criteria, it says that the rezoning shall be in the best interest of the citizens, and Anchorage should promote public health, safety, and general welfare. And looking at the comprehensive plan and all the things I mentioned earlier, I saw that we do need more residential units. This is one of the only sites that has been slated to have that additional growth. It also was identified as, by the West Anchorage District Plan, as a site for small-scale commercial, which is why I think the B1A is appropriate. I also want to address a comment someone made about this being spot zoning, because that was also an issue that I looked at. However, when I looked right to the east side of the park, there is R2M. Right to the north of the open space is again R2M, so I didn't see that problem with spot zoning. I actually saw it would be a good flow, especially into the West Anchorage District Plan commercial site that was noted. I touched on this a lot earlier, I really do believe that the rezoning complies and conforms with the comprehensive plan on page twenty-seven of the land use plan, on page twenty-six of the land use plan, and on page seventy-five of the West Anchorage District And then again, is this compatible with surrounding uses? That's why I did not feel it was a spot zoning issue, is that it really was gonna kind of create that transition from what has been labeled as the small-scale commercial going into the residential facility. So I thought it would actually create more of a compatible use in the neighborhood. I would like to thank the staff and the petitioner for addressing the issues regarding the traffic impact analysis, and I think that will help alleviate some concerns, as will some site plans down the road. And I think that is it for me for now, because I spoke a long time.
Yeah, I would like to concur with Commissioner Bailey that we largely conform with the approval criteria. I do want to request one amendment, and that would be to somehow carry through the restrictions on the commercial use that are identified in the West Anchorage District Plan into the B1A zoning. I think that we heard from staff that the B1A zoning in the Title 21 Codebook has more liberal uses than the West Anchorage District Plan specifies, and I'd like to ensure that what that plan specified is carried forward.
Do you like to phrase that as a motion to amend?
Yes, I would. So the motion would be to amend the conditions of approval to include special limitations that match the limitations on small-scale commercial use identified on page eighty-one of the West Anchorage District Plan.
And that is seconded by Commissioner Strike. Would you like to speak to that motion more than you already have?
No.
Okay. I know we have a lot of individuals in the queue, so I think you're, we're going to speak about the regular motion. Can you just flag your hand if you'd like to speak to the amendment? Commissioner Robinson.
Yeah, thank you. I'd support that, but to me, the way that you implement that is you require a site plan for both lots, and through that site plan process, show that you're consistent with the description of small-scale commercial in the West Anchorage District Plan. Otherwise, I don't know how you would sort of demonstrate. But to me, the vehicle to demonstrate that is the compatibility and the design of both the commercial and the residential at time of a site plan approval process. So even though, so again, I don't know that I'm, I'll support your motion, but I don't think it gets us all the way there, because I think what needs to happen, if you want more certainty, is to show that connection, not wait and just have the residential portion go through a site plan approval and not, I mean, you could show even on a site plan how it connects to this commercial, but not have to include the commercial, because it's not really, you know what I'm saying? So to me, that's what I would want to see, because what I heard was testimony very clearly saying, how do we know that this type of development is consistent with West Anchorage as you go from kind of suburban and slowly get into larger lot, and, you know, sort of larger suburban areas of West Anchorage? So again, I'd support, if there's nothing else on there, then I'll come back with a site plan.
Can I make a change to the motion to amend? Or do I remove this one and restate?
I'm going to check, but can he, all right, the second has been withdrawn, I'm sorry, Laurie. Would you like to restate your motion to amend, or would you like to cede the floor and have someone else move to amend?
I might have Tyler make the amendment to mine, just because...
Or it would, you would just be, it wouldn't be an amendment to yours, we're at the point where...
Amendment, but to make sure that it's clearly stated that the site plan review would be the time that a body would ensure that the West Anchorage District Plan requirements for small scale are achieved.
Yeah, if I may, I'd like to make a motion that we add a special limitation requiring a major site plan approval for tracks two and three that would demonstrate a site plan and design intent meeting the description of small-scale commercial in the West Anchorage District Plan.
And that has been seconded by Commissioner Strike. Would you like to speak to your motion?
I'm gonna support my motion. I still don't know where I stand on the overall motion, but I do believe that, I think it's one thing to sit here and talk about examples of small-scale commercial, and quite another to actually implement it. And to me, there's a very different context to implement. This is larger tracks that can be designed in very different ways versus a small infill development that's made to sort of be much more consistent with the neighborhood. Anything could happen here within those two acres and those eight acres. To me, I think you need, the petitioner needs to prove out to the public that their site plan's consistent with the intent of the West Anchorage District Plan.
Would anyone else like to speak to that amendment to the main motion? Commissioner Gardner.
I intend to support this motion as well. When I first looked at the application, I also, well, I initially didn't really understand how the B1A kind of made its way in here at all, and after following the, kind of the chain through the plans that the chair referenced earlier, I saw how it kind of came into the West Area Plan. And seeing the testimony today, there was a lot of, you know, concern and opposition to the presence of the B1A, and my thinking for it had been recognizing that the people here today, you know, have concerns with that. I viewed the West Area Plan as reflecting kind of a broader view of the community that had been implemented into that plan that contemplated the B1A. But I think, to the same point that I think Commissioner Robinson made earlier, if we're gonna be kind of importing that into the 2040 Land Use Plan, we need to, as a reflection of the community's view of that, we need to import it as the community understood at the time, which includes the more limited description that's available in the West Anchorage District Plan. So I support an effort to make sure that those limitations are included in whatever development takes place in the B1A.
Would anybody else like to speak on the motion to amend, the main motion? I would just like to say that I think we should already be doing this, and I don't know why we, that's, I was actually really surprised that that is not the case. And so I am very happy to support this motion to amend and call for a vote. All right, that motion to amend passes. We are now back to our main motion, which has now been amended as we have voted. Would anyone like to speak to the main motion as amended? Commissioner Anderson, are you, nope. Commissioner Strike.
Yeah, this has been a tough one. I mean, we've heard testimony, public testimony too, that speaks to the compatibility, the necessity, et cetera, and, but as we look at the documents placed in front of us and how this piece, this asterisk for the Sand Lake land use detail from the, from the West Anchorage District Plan, these maps matter. This didn't just sneak in, this has been there for some time. So the community council's already spoken on this. It made it to this level. So that gets me past the compatibility and the necessity element. The reverse now, you know, it's not in my backyard type of syndrome, but at the same time, I'm on the fence. But the paperwork that we have in front of us and the track that we're going down and so forth, we're using what the community councils, what the district plans have brought forth, what it was envisioned would happen as areas were developed and so forth. This didn't, this didn't happen tonight. This didn't happen in the last month. This has been going on for years. It didn't just spring upon us. And now to come forth and say, well, we didn't know this was happening. I can respect that, because a lot of times, we don't know what's happening in our own backyards. And it takes involvement and so forth, and how this got in there to begin with on paper, two-dimensional, it looks like it makes sense. As we hear from the community, I'm not sure that that asterisk, that this notation here would have made it in two years ago, three years ago. That's it.
Commissioner Spinelli.
I plan to support the motion. I think that it's in compliance with the West Anchorage District Plan, accomplishes several of the housing goals of the 2040 Plan. And I think that the amendment to add the site plan review kind of will, I think, satisfy some of the concerns of the community, and so I think it's a good balance, I'm gonna support.
Commissioner Gardner.
I think I plan to support it as well, and largely for reasons that have already been provided. I just have a few small comments I wanted to add to the record here tonight in response to specific concerns that were raised. First, there was a concern about the effect on overpopulation of local schools, and from my kind of review of what we were looking at today, that's not something that's really within our purview, or relevant to the criteria that we are tasked to review. So I guess I'll just have to have, you know, faith that the district and the city will find a way to make the best use, and the best way to resolve those crowding issues, but that's not really something that we can handle today. There was a reference to traffic, I think that's been mentioned as well, so there'll be a traffic impact analysis that we can expect. One reference to what the actual criteria are, and the references to necessity in 2103.160A. I'm not sure that I would say that, or could say that the rezoning is a necessity, but from my read of the, of the code, I'm just looking at the approval criteria that are provided for the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I think that those criteria are met, and that the rezoning complies with and conforms with the comprehensive plan.
Any, oh, Commissioner Robinson.
Yeah, thanks. Addressing condition four, because we heard it raised, that the rezoning is compatible with surrounding zoning and development, and protects areas designated for specific uses on the zoning map from incompatible land uses. I think, I think my intent of a site plan review is that that gets mitigated with that site plan review. I think the issue I do, however, still have some level of discomfort with is this fact that we have previously seen and approved a conditional use permit for a future state, which is, you know, way down the road after, after there's no longer, you know, gravel being extracted from the site. And the petitioner has actually shared and sort of teased, if you will, some uses that I can't really tell how serious those uses really are. And I don't know, I don't really even understand what sections of code trigger these images of soccer fields and gardens and things like that. But I, and I don't have the image in front of me, but I can remember a couple of years ago seeing something to that effect. To me, when you have large tracts of land, you have to go through larger master planning efforts. You either do that privately, or you're compelled to do that by the public, because we don't trust that a developer will do the right thing. I just don't, I still don't see it. I hear that there's a conditional use permit coming back. I don't know what it is, other than showing some different grading. I don't know if we're gonna get into this future, you know, sort of vision. But to me, the reason why you have larger intensity on this corner is because there's open space around it. I truly believe that. I believe that that open space around it sort of, because otherwise, you look at the map, and it's all the lighter shades of yellow. And the reason why you put a darker shade here on this spot is because it becomes lighter shade when you sort of distribute it across this larger track. But I don't have any real certainty or understanding of what that larger track would be. That's where my level of discomfort comes in. So I feel better that there's a site plan approval. I think that you can make, I don't think this is gonna be fifteen dwelling units an acre. I think that's incredibly challenging to do in our community. I think it'd be something less than that. But it's, it's, it's still gotta be done well to feel like it's in character. I think we make a step closer, but I still have this overarching issue, and I don't really have, have a means to wrap that in, other than just to vote no. So there's, there's my dilemma this evening. I do think that otherwise, for this type of density, which is just modest, you know, it's moderate density for Anchorage, even for Anchorage kind of areas outside of our core, that it is well-served by roads, it is well-served by parks, it is well-served by trails. That's better than a lot of places that we have when we develop higher, higher-density housing. So I also think about the need to distribute housing in places that are not always the same places, but provide households with opportunities that everyone ought to enjoy in our community.
Would anyone else like to speak on the motion? All right, then I'm gonna call for a vote. All right, that motion passes. One thing before we move on to closing out our agenda, I think one thing that was brought up was that a lot of people felt like the, they didn't understand the process. Francis, would you be able to walk us through, where does this go from here?
So tomorrow morning, I'll write up the written form of tonight's decision and send it back to the commission for probably next month's adoption of the resolution. There's no opportunity for the public to testify or to comment on it, so I don't recommend that you attend for that or something. So once I have the written form of the decision, then I take the assembly ordinances that I've drafted, write an assembly memorandum behind them, and then attach everything in these packets behind that, and enter it into a review where it goes to the municipal clerk to be introduced. And that process takes about a month. What you all need to know is that it gets introduced on the assembly's agenda, and public hearing notices are mailed to everyone all over... public hearing notices are mailed to everyone all over again. And then, there's 21 days before there's a public hearing in front of the assembly. So, it's, it's many months from now, at least three, maybe four, before the assembly would be taking testimony from you all. And there'll be a notification, and of course, you can call me with any questions you have.
And then, also, potentially, let's say it gets approved, and then we talked about all these things, like a site plan review, and all those, that would also be open for public comment as well?
Yeah, if the assembly adopts the, approves the rezone with the effective clause requiring a conditional use amendment, and a special limitation requiring a site plan review to show that it's implementing or complying with the West Anchorage District Plan, then that'll be another public hearing in front of either the Planning and Zoning Commission or Urban Design Commission, it depends. And that will be, you know, signs would go up, posters on the site, public hearing notices would be mailed, it's advertised on our webpage, the, for two months, the public would be able to review the application before there's a meeting on it.
And we heard that there's a conditional use permit that's gonna be coming up here. Is that available for public comment?
Yeah, so, the property owner submitted a conditional use application to amend the fill sites approval, and then they, and they paid for it, and that, they took it back because they wanted to make sure that the project area included these two tracts that were under discussion. There was just a misunderstanding, where they thought that, that that would be handled by a separate conditional use, and couldn't be handled with a conditional use amendment. And essentially, once the case was submitted, I looked at it and said, do you guys want to include this area, as opposed to having to do a separate conditional use? And so, they said, we should include it, do it all as one. And so, their forthcoming, their application's forthcoming. And they'll be having a community meeting, I think at the community council meeting, before they make application, with the updated application.
All right, so I would just encourage all you guys, that if you are interested enough to come out here, that this is when it starts getting into the nitty-gritty details, and that's when your voice is really gonna matter. So, I'd really hope you guys come out, because it's gonna help everyone else coming down the line. Now, I think we're gonna look, Commissioner Strike, don't jump in here, I think we should let our newest commissioner do our motion. If you would like to do a motion to adjourn. Oh, Commissioner Strike jumps the gate, doesn't even let our newest commissioner come in. How rude. All right, there's a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Strike, seconded by Commissioner Krishna, and we are adjourned.